Too dark, you can't see it? No, I can hear.
Call meeting, Jordan. To the Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we will guide us this evening to make our decisions. This is the regular Noonan City Council meeting of October the 22nd, 2024. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 8th, 2024 before you all entertain a motion. We adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, we adopt the minutes presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. I'm going to ask Ms. Jenkins if she would at this time to introduce the members of the Noonan Youth Council who were in attendance this evening.
Call, please stand when I call your name. We have with us, Jordan Guy, a junior at East Coweta High School, Naomi Kraft, junior at East Coweta High School, Rhea Patel, junior at Noonan High School, Nisha Reddy, senior at Northgate, and Drake Strickland, a sophomore at Northgate. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate your service. Okay, we're going to roll into appointments. Mr. Kritko is not here this evening, obviously, so he'll put the bicentennial appointment on the next agenda. Christmas commission, Ms. Jenkins?
I need all of them on the next agenda.
Okay, all of these on the next agenda, thank you. And so, Mr. Guion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mike Winslet.
All right.
Second.
Motion to second, that's for the Convention Center Authority?
Yes.
Yes, okay, Mike Winslet for the Convention Center Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. And then the next, Mr. Kritko again on the next, keeping him beautiful on the next agenda, Mr. Guion, Neura.
Yes, for the Tree and Parks Commission, I'd like to nominate Martin Smith.
Second.
Okay, and that's Tree and Parks. Motion.
What did I say? Yeah, Tree and Parks, yeah.
That's right. Motion to second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll go back up to the Neura, do you have a Neura appointment?
I do not, next meeting, please.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Thomas.
I do, I'd like to nominate Anthony Galiato.
All right.
Second.
Second, motion to second, Anthony Galiato for the Neura Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda, the city manager does have an item this evening, Mr. Phillips, how are you?
Yeah, I do, real quick, Mayor, Council, good evening. Each year, our staff works to re-register all of our authorities, such as the Development Authority, Committee Center Authority, and we have one authority that we've been re-registering for many years that is inactive and has no purpose to meet, and that's the Hospital Authority. You may remember, we created the Hospital Authority when we did the hospital deal, but when Piedmont bought the hospital, all the bonds were defeased. So there was no purpose of this particular authority. So, we would like to get council's authorization to start the process to actually eliminate that particular authority because we actually see no need in it. We just got the notice not long ago, and Mr. Craver, who's been doing that registration, said, ask, can we please get council's authority to start to eliminate that particular authority?
Any questions or issues on this?
I do, I just wanted to know, you know, it's just not in existence. Student, Piedmont Noonan doesn't have anything going on with it, they don't have any assets, yeah, that kind of stuff.
Well, it's still in existence, it just has not been met. The bond will shoot until 2027, and so the authority by law had saved that until 2027. But, when Piedmont bought the hospital, they feasted the bonds, which means they hadn't made all the advance payments, and the bonds were actually called in 2014, and they were paid off at that time. And so, while the authority is still in existence, as far as it owns no property, it leases no property, has no employees, and the obligation that the authority had and the city had on the bonds has been terminated.
So it has no money?
It has no money, it has no, there are no assets into the authority. Now, we may come back and ask you, I know this is going to sound a little bad, but as we do this, we may come back and ask you to appoint a member or two to the authority, so that we can create a forum for the authority. We do still have four individuals who are still with us, three are not, but as far as getting those four together, we have to see. And it does take a resolution by both this body and the directors and trustees of the authority, in order for you to last term.
So.
Do you need a motion?
Having heard all that, I'll entertain a motion if you want to give staff direction to begin the process of dissolving the Noonan.
I make that motion to begin the process.
Second.
Motion to second, any other questions or comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. I don't have anything this evening. Evening, we're on to new business. The first is a consideration of state and local cybersecurity grant program and award acceptance. Mr. Lee, how are you this evening?
Fantastic, thank you, sir.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 2022, the Department of Homeland Security established a cybersecurity grant with primarily focused towards state, local, and territorial governments across the country. And the city of Noonan applied for this grant in the first round, and thankfully, we were awarded the grant in the total of $55,450. There is a 10% cost share that comes along with the accepting of the grant, and that, the funding for that cost share has been placed in the fiscal year '25 budget under the general fund.
Okay, so you're asking for approval from council to move forward with the grant?
Yes, sir.
The grant program. Any question? Okay, I have a motion to second. Motion to second, any questions, Ms. Lee? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. I believe you're still up for the next item.
You got it.
A consideration to enter into the agreement with Before the Breach for Professional Services Regarding Cybersecurity Assessment and Training.
Yes, sir. In preparation for the, for the grant proposal, the city of Noonan reached out to qualifying vendors for professional services to provide a cybersecurity assessment. And out of all of the submittals that we reached before the breach, made the, made the best proposal. Their, their proposal comes in three phases, it starts with an incoming assessment, where they'll have a look at our operations, and see how we adjust as far as in relation to CIS controls. And then they'll come in and they will help us remediate the findings. And the, the main advantage to this proposal is they're going to provide training, where they're going to come in with the staff and train us how to run these assessments, and how to find these inefficiencies, and more importantly, is how to address them. And the funding for this, of course, would be from the, the grant that we were just awarded.
All right, any questions, Mr. Lee? Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion to second, we grant the request of moving into the agreement with Before the Breach for Services Regarding Cybersecurity Assessment and Training. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, sir. The next is consideration of amendments to the original amendments under the ARPA Act. Mr. Moody, how are you, sir?
I'm doing great, good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you, are five amendments to the original agreements for awards that you awarded back in 2022. These amendments are built to provide us the legal ground to continue monitoring these organizations as they continue to expend their ARPA dollars. They're nearing completion, but three of them, Neura Habitat and Housing Authority, will have programs that extend far beyond the reaches of when ARPA's deadline is, so we're going to continue to monitor that and establish program income guidelines as well.
Okay, so that I ask is for permission to allow me to sign the five executed amendments.
That's correct.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Moody. The next is a consideration of the term extension to the current lease agreement between the city of Noonan and Hope Global.
Sir, Mayor Brady, members of the council, we do have members of Hope Global in the audience, if you do have questions about this, but as you know, many years ago, through the Crime Reduction Task Force, Hope Global was identified as a potential partner to deliver particular services. Generally, in the chalk level neighborhood, they've been doing so quite successfully for years. Upon our review of the lease agreement, we're at the end, and we would, staff recommends that we continue this lease agreement, extend it to allow these gentlemen and the people that work with them and around them to continue delivering services to that neighborhood.
It's been a very successful program, we appreciate their efforts, thank you very much. Is, are there any comments or discussion? Motion to second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Craver. Mr. Chief Lincolnship has the next, consideration of acceptance for the Community Oriented Policing Services Grant, this is the COPS hiring program, not the chief, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, the chief is not here. He asked me to step in on his behalf, he's away in training.
We appreciate that.
As part of the chief's ongoing drive to save money and still offer the best services possible, one of the things we look at is grants.
Sure.
So this year, we applied for and received a grant from the Community Oriented Policing Services, part of the U.S. Department of Justice. The grant amount covers half the salary for four officers for a period of three years. And the, the city is responsible for about half of the, of the total compensation for grants and salaries, and our budget, our award was $500,000.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second, do we approve accepting the grants for the COPS program? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, thank you, sir, we appreciate it very much. On the next page, Ms. Kelsey, consideration of sanitation fee increase based on the Consumer Price Index.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, on October 1st, the city was notified by Amwaste, who is the city's sanitation residential provider. They notified us that there will be an increase in fees by 3%, and that will take effect on January the 1st. Just for information, and as you will recall, as part of the agreement that we have, it does allow for a 3% maximum increase, and it is based on a Consumer Price Index, and so that falls in line, the actual CPI is 3.1, so again, the maximum is three. The fee for a container will go from $21.90 to $22.56, this is for informational purposes, you don't have to do anything. But the city staff, you know, we've been spending a lot of time going through our budgets, and we are, we have been facing some inflationary pressures. The city staff would also recommend a 3% increase to our portion of the bill, which is an administration fee and a brush and bulk fee. And that administration fee would go from $1.88 to $1.94, and the brush and bulk fee would go from $9.26 to $9.54 per month. So if the council wants to consider that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions?
Do we need a motion?
Well, we don't need a motion, I don't believe, on the Amwaste, but.
No, that's correct, this is just, this would just be on the city.
We do, on our fee, the 3% fee on our.
Yes, just on the city.
How much motion did we approve that?
Request.
Second.
Okay, for the brush and bulk fee, the 3%.
And add in, and add in.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next item is annexation request for annexation 2024-01 by PR Land Investments LLC on behalf of six property owners for 267.756 acres located on Georgia Highway 16, Sidney Pope Road, and Lunsford Road, requesting zoning designations of PR, PDR, and RS-20 for the, for low density, and for 21 acres, 21.46 acres. This is a decision that we made tonight, Ms. Donovan is here to make a presentation, answer any questions. This is a decision tonight, just to refer this on to the Planning Commission, you're all aware, and I'm sure she's going to mention that this project is, requires a DRI, so it'll be quite the process before it comes back to us. So, Ms. Donovan.
Thank you very much. Yes, as the mayor stated, this is an annexation request for 267-plus acres located on Highway 16, Lunsford Road, and also Sidney Pope Road. They are requesting three separate zoning designations, the first would be PDR, Plan Development Residential, that's for a single-family subdivision with 669 lots. ILT, Light Industrial, would be the second portion for 130,000 square foot employment building. And then RS-20, which is the suburban, single-family, low-density district, and that would be for five existing homes on Sidney Pope Road. The new subdivision would have a density of 3.24 acres with a mixture of housing products, and there are some sample elevations that have been provided in your packet that you can look at to see what the product will look like. If the houses were sold today, they had indicated that they would range from the low 400s to the high 600s. Amenities would include at least a pool, passive recreation areas, outdoor playground equipment, as well as other recreational amenities that were approved by you all. Tonight is just simply whether, vote to send this on to the Planning Commission for referral. If the council decides not to move forward, then this annexation process would simply end. However, if council votes to refer it on to Planning Commission, then staff will notify the county and the school board in accordance with annexation law, and we would also notify Three Rivers Regional Commission, because as the mayor stated, it does exceed the 400-unit threshold for a development or regional impact or DRI.
Any questions of Ms. Donovan? Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion to second, we refer the annexation request on to the Planning Commission, any, any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, Ms. Donovan, we appreciate it. The next item under unfinished business is a consideration for contract award to Pond and Company's development of construction documents for Farmer Street Cemetery Project. Ms. Palmer is here this evening, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Always a pleasure to see you.
Always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's start here. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, I am Jocelyn Palmer at 1-9 Alpine Drive. Come before you tonight as chairman of the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission, some of my fellow commissioners are present this evening as well, Lauren and Vida. For almost four years, the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission has worked cooperatively to construct a plan for the future of the Farmer Street Cemetery. We've carefully reviewed the work of previous commission, along with available local historical documents, and we have used state-of-the-art technology to identify and geo-locate 455 sets of remains on the site. We've completed an updated survey to define the legal boundaries of the site and work to identify and remove any encroachments on the site. We've held public meetings and online surveying, soliciting public input where possible. We have worked cooperatively with the African-American Alliance and the museum to address any needs that they currently may have, to address potential future needs, and to be sensitive to their mission. Most recently, we've engaged Pond and Company to provide us with expertise and guidance to formulate a plan for the future of the cemetery. With their expert assistance, we have completed Phase 1 and Phase 2 of three phases, and tonight, we come before you to unanimously recommend that we proceed to Phase 3. No changes to the plan itself have been made since you authorized Phase 2. We've worked very hard to provide physical design selections and guidance to Pond and Company. Phase 3 of the process is to provide funds and authorization to Pond and Company to complete the final construction documents. We believe that this plan continues to address our charge to protect, preserve, and promote the Farmer Street Cemetery for future generations. We'd like to remind the city council and the citizens of Noonan that the Farmer Street Cemetery is a sensitive archaeological site, and any work or improvements must be completed with the supervision of entities with expertise in working around archaeological sites. Accordingly, do we have a representative, do you have anything that you'd wish to say this evening? Okay, all right, and so that's the first item I have for you today.
Okay, and the problem, the probable cost for Phase 3 is $54,950. And as we mentioned before the meeting, that $54,000 is not budgeted this year, it's in a line item for next year's budget, so we don't have the budgeting capability to grant the request this evening. We have recently been through a pretty tight millage rate increase discussion, and we have pushed off several items that we didn't have to spend this year for the remainder of the year, so.
All right.
I would suggest to council that we, that we move this forward until, till next year, and, and at that point, come back and revisit.
Revisit the item, understood, and that was item one of two items to bring before the council this evening. The second item does not require anything of a fiscal nature, but I believe that the way that they are placed on the agenda is, is that we need to consider, ask, ask your parliamentarian, but we need to consider both of them at the same time, and this is more for informational purposes, I think you'll understand. So if I could proceed with that, and then, then you might want to, you know.
Please, I, I'd like the public to know what you're thinking about that particular issue.
Exactly, all right, yeah.
We'll have some input on that, I'm sure.
Right. I'm representing the Cemetery Commission to present to council a proposal for a potential name change of the property to better reflect the history of the property. I think that it would be instructive to brief the council on why we are making such a proposal. For quite some time, the commission has been informally discussing whether the name Farmer Street Cemetery fully describes the property. This name is obviously not a historic designation, given that Farmer Street wasn't installed until 1961, and the initial cemetery dates between 1828 and 1840. A suggestion was made that the term burial ground was more appropriate to describe the property than cemetery. Through our friends at Pond and Company, we've been able to tap the resources of the history researchers at the New South Company. The commission asked New South to research if there was any difference between, or distinction, in the definition or usage of the terms cemetery and burial ground. The answer returned from New South was that there is no difference, and the terms were essentially synonymous. We then asked the African-American Alliance to be kind enough to conduct an informal survey of visitors to their site over the period of a month, which term the visitors thought better described the property. The resounding result of this informal survey was burial ground was a better descriptor of the property. The thinking is, is that cemeteries are often thought of as highly organized installations, an example being Arlington National, or the military cemeteries in Normandy, France. The term burial ground is less formal and unorganized, more random in execution. Further, in most cases, the persons residing at this particular site had no other options or choices as to their final disposition. Individuals were haphazardly placed, sometimes in informal family groupings, but definitely not in any organized fashion. After some discussion of various options, the commission recommends to the council that the property be renamed as the Noonan Heritage African-American Burial Grounds. The commission fully understands that the power to change the name fully resides with the city council. It is entirely your decision, we make recommendations. We hope that the council will take up this matter and make the name change as the commission has proposed. We do want to point out that, to the council, that Pond and Company will need to know if any changes are made prior to the completion of that Phase 3 process we just talked about. The new entry signage and new reader board signage are part of that Phase 3 process, and while we have a few months to make a decision, there is a final decision point approaching, and Pond will need firm guidance on this issue. And that concludes my remarks.
Yep, and, and we appreciate that recommendation and the thoughtfulness that went into coming up with the process that you went through to come up with that, with that recommendation. But, I, I think again, since the public is just hearing this for the first time, we heard it when we got the letter, and I, I would like that opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. It's an important, as you said, area for our, for our city, and will remain that. So, I'm not sure what the timing would be when we bring this back, it would, I, I think we could just bring it all back together.
I think you could bring it all back together at that time, given your budgetary processes.
Sure, okay, so, Ms. Jenkins, did you?
I do, I have some comments and some questions.
Sure.
One, thank you all so very much for your time and your effort to keep this project moving, it has been a very long time coming, longer than that, to properly honor those who are buried there and the heritage that, and the legacy that they leave for our community. Thank you all very much for your sensitivity and your diligence in making sure that we properly do this. So, one, I, I personally love the idea of changing the name Farmer Street Cemetery, it does not tell you who's there and what it's about. But, two, I have a question, we have a SLOX line item for our cemeteries, does that include this cemetery?
Still?
That item has not been determined, that is an item that we have on our upcoming retreat agenda for next week. Our council will determine how that $2.5 million allocation will be spent.
So, I'll make sure that that's part of the session.
That's, that's next week, yeah.
And, I think my second question is that I see on this, uh, site plan that there are a few encroachments that we're dealing with.
Yes, ma'am, it's my understanding, the city attorney can speak to this, that those have all been dealt with, and they no longer encroach, is that correct, Taska?
There's one slight, but it, from the work done by Paleo West to determine the location of burial sites, they're not in conflict. We've been working with the property owner, it's kind of, if you can get in your mind's eye, at the bend of Cole Street, there's a homeowner there that has a fence that's right on, maybe right over, but not encroaching and not in, not in the location of any burial sites. And at the time, the homeowner is unable to make the changes, but everything else has been removed off the site. Yes, ma'am, all of that's been removed.
We're hopeful that when we do fence the greater area, that we can probably, with the cooperation of the homeowner, take care of that little issue right then, and then she would be able to retain her fenced area, because it'd be our fence.
Right. And, we never did resolve the, the, the boundary issue.
No, ma'am, we did not, it is my understanding, as we've been briefed, that the home, or the property owner of that property is uncooperative and has ceased to communicate with the city on that issue, so we can't do anything if he doesn't cooperate. Yes, sorry.
We can, but that's another discussion.
Yes, it is, for another time. So, we understand what we have here, a motion, I think, to bring this item back to the attention of the council once the 2025 budget has been adopted, would be appropriate. So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, Ms. Palmer, appreciate it. Okay, under visitors, the first is a request for street closures for Porch Fest, an event for April the 12th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. How are you this evening?
Hello, I'm doing well, how are you?
Good, if you'll identify yourself.
My name is Melody Kaiser, and I am the primary organizer of the first ever Noonan Porch Fest. So Porch Fest is a fancy name for a music festival on, that will happen on porches in the city of Holmes. We have already sent handwritten thank you cards and invitations to all of the homeowners in the area that we're requesting to be blocked off. Everyone that we were able to speak with face to face was not only supportive, but very excited about the event. I also sent informational packets in this, so that if anybody had any questions or concerns, they could reach out to us, and as of today, we have had no questions or concerns. We're also partnering with the Noonan Coweta History Center, they will be our daytime VIP event, and in return, they will get a percentage of any profits that we have, with a guarantee to cover their operational expenses for that day. We have 10 houses that are already confirmed, they want to host the musicians for Porch Fest, and other surrounding counties or cities like Sonoya are already doing a similar festival, and it's been very successful for them the last few years.
The, the one issue that we have before us as a, as a group, the last two years, if this body will remember, the Bicycle Association had, in Coweta County, had the Crip. The, um, the one issue that we have before us as a, as a group, the last two years, if this body will remember, the Bicycle Association, uh, had, in Coweta County, had the CRI, that, this is that weekend. Um, they've kind of owned that weekend for the last two years, and they've notified the city that they are still in discussion about whether or not they want to claim that weekend again. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I kind of felt like I, I owe them a, an opportunity to tell us one way or the other. Um, and you're coming before us wanting that same weekend, which wouldn't be a problem, except that College Street, where your Porch Fest event would be, is our detour through, through downtown Noonan while the CRI's going on. So, um, Mr. Phillips, have you got any further information about what kind of timing?
Uh, we, we've had some conversations with some of the members, representatives of Black Kaweta, uh, and we, we, they have confirmed that this is the date, if, that, if that organization decides to go forward. Uh, have not received any formal response as to what that decision has been, I mean, I know that, um, Council Thompson, do you have any other further information, same thing?
I don't either, um, I mean, I think it's a good point, Mayor Brady, would, would two weeks mess you up if we had, we decided this in two weeks, would that be okay with, for you?
It would, could I add something to that discussion? So, our initial reasoning for wanting April twelfth to be the date of Porch Fest is because it's also National Records Store Day. Where hundreds of tourists and citizens of Noonan come to the downtown area for a music-related event. And then secondly, just because we've sent the invitations and informational packets to the entire neighborhood, um, it.
Well, you did that before you came to us, I mean, that's.
Yes, sir, it was, um, we discussed with the city manager and Officer Thompson and Officer Stanford.
Right.
We were advised to do so.
I, I think we're in a bad spot here.
Yeah, I, I, I was, I think that, uh, obviously, it's in April, waiting two weeks to make a decision on this, I don't think is going to be, uh, hard, hard for their schedule. And during that two-week period, we can see if we can get confirmation as to what, uh, Black Kaweta is or is not doing. I know that they were considering going forward and had some concerns and may not go forward.
Well, we have a meeting Thursday evening, so we'll make sure there's some, with the topics of discussion.
Okay, as in day after tomorrow?
As in the day after tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so they're, they're in a decision-making mode in two days from now, so we should know something pretty quick.
Okay, great, thank you.
Then a motion to put this on our next agenda would be appropriate, I think?
So moved. Second.
Motion of second, we put this item on our next agenda for a decision, all those in question?
Yeah, do you, do you all have an alternate date, like say, there's a raid date or something you all had to consider in the first place?
Um, no, but we can make an alternate date. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, motion of second, any other comments or question? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you for being here. The request on the next item on the agenda is for the Kaweta Foundation to close portions of East Broad Street on, uh, April the nineteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-five, from seven a.m. to two p.m. for the Kaweta Grand Prix. Yeah, so, um. Ms. Webb, how are you? If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, Kristen Webb with the Kaweta Community Foundation, um, Cletus, are we able to start beforehand with the video? No.
We have a person.
I don't, I don't have one.
We have a person.
Okay, well, we'll go without the video, it's fine. We're gonna blame that on Bob Brown tonight. But on behalf of the Kaweta Community Foundation, as well as Yamaha and Bunnell, um, I come before you to ask if we're able to close, temporarily close East Broad Street in downtown Noonan for the upcoming Kaweta Grand Prix. This would be our third annual event, um, which on average brings in anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand individuals. This is a family-friendly, community-focused fundraiser event, not only to support the Kaweta Community Foundation, but also to support STEM education. Um, tentatively, we have this scheduled for April nineteenth, and we're requesting a street closure from seven a.m. to two p.m. to safely accommodate participants and spectators and event activities. Um, overall, you know, not only does this event promote STEM education and a wonderful time in downtown Noonan, it's also going to help to drive business to downtown Noonan as well. Um, we've spoken with the majority of our business owners on East Broad Street, all who are in approval and support of the event as well. What questions can I answer for you?
Well, we'll see, what, what, and do you have any questions?
Because you've gotten off the date with about the CRI race, so you got off that date, which is probably a good idea.
That's right, and they've moved the event, for those of you who were, were at the CRI last year, this is the Soapbox Derby, uh, essentially, you could call it the Kaweta Grand Prix, which I, I think is a great name, but it was the Soapbox Derby that was held in front of, uh, Carnegie and Murphy's Florist, and on that slight hill. East Broad is a much steeper hill.
Much steeper hill, a little safer, it's a little longer as well. Um, Scott can give you all of the details on why that street was chosen. Um, in addition to that, um, you know, tentatively, we're looking at about twenty-five to thirty students for our past two years each year. And then on our adult teams, including some of your own staff members, um, we've had roughly about fifty adults that have participated in this event as well. Um, a big reason for the change in date is spring break, when we have students competing, we wanna be making sure we're paying attention to those dates, as well as to eliminate any confusion for sponsorships as well.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Trump, I will add, while staff is supportive of, of this particular event, uh, the actual closure is not that complicated, uh, so that, that's actually a good thing. Uh, but I do want to bring to your attention, I think I sent an email out, uh, last week, uh, that beginning in late April, I mean, late March, through all of April into the first couple of weeks of May, there's basically a downtown event, a downtown enclosure every single weekend for basically six or seven weeks in a row. We love the fact that downtown is so popular and vibrant that people want to come and do this, and I don't want it to, you know, be a negative on their particular event, but I do think we need as a body to have some conversations going forward about how we can manage that. Uh, it's, it's a, quite a bit of load to ask of our police force, uh, to provide additional personnel for six or seven weeks in a row. Uh, at this point in time, there are no fees associated with any of these closures and the additional, uh, police personnel that's gonna be needed for the closures.
So this doesn't fall under the race thing that we did?
Nope, that's exactly right, we did a race and a parade route where there's a fee, but just for, by closure, this body hasn't set any type of polit, we've just been pretty good, pretty friendly to all of these organizers in the past. But I think it's something that eventually we're gonna have to discuss, probably sooner rather than later.
I would suggest we try to do that next week, uh, as an item off, off agenda, but very.
Hopefully, we can get through to that item, I mean, you, you see the book, it's pretty good.
It's very thick, and we're, we've got a full day, there's no doubt.
We'll try.
Okay, all right, so is there a motion on this particular item?
So moved. Second.
Motion of second, we approve the request, any discussion, uh, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you for being here, Ms. Webb.
Thank you.
Um, the next item, uh, has been withdrawn from the agenda. Uh, we do need an executive session for real estate, and I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tim Gion to take us into that. But before he makes that motion, I am going to announce that I need to recuse myself from the executive session because of the business arrangement my firm has with the landowner. So, Mr. Gion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we now enter to closed session as allowed by OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-four, and in pursuant to advice from the city attorney for the purpose of discussing real estate. And that we, in open session, adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-four. And that this body ratified the actions of the council taking in closed session, and confirm that the subject matters of the closed session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
I guess.
I went to sleep, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay? All right, motion approved.
All right, they are in executive session.